Welcome again.
Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Aldag, here. Griffin, here. Hubbard, here. Michelle's is absent. Schlaf, semi farrow.
He's also absent. Both Michelle's and semi farrow, let us know that.
Shy and Kio.
Yes, here. Thank you. Item C on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from our city council work session on October twenty eighth and our city council meeting on October one eighth. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve both sets of minutes.
Motion by Aldag, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Schlaf, thank you Dan. So any discussion on the minutes?
What? I would just like to have an amendment made in my council comments. It just says that I hope that people are careful about the facts. The whole point of me saying that was I hope that people who sit around this table at all of these discussions are careful about the facts. I mean, I hope everyone is careful about the facts, but in that context, that's what I meant.
Any other comments on the meetings? Please call the vote to approve the meetings.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries. We are down to prearranged participation and we have two items under prearranged participation. The first of which is a proclamation recognizing Jamie Griffin's last council meeting and her service as a city council member. Jamie, I didn't do a good job of proofreading and I have an error in the very first sentence, so I'm embarrassed by that a little bit, but we'll get it corrected so that I get the correct version over to you. But I want to stand and recognize you if you allow me to read this proclamation. Whereas Jamie Griffin was elected to serve as a city council member at the November twenty twenty general election. And whereas Jamie Griffin served as a council member from November twenty twenty through November twenty twenty four. And whereas council member Griffin, along with her service on city council, has participated in several council committees, including the Parks and Recreation Committee and the Voning Ordinance Subcommittee. And whereas council member Griffin served as a city council liaison to the Dexter Days Committee. And whereas Jamie Griffin started her service on city council during a challenging period where public bodies were navigating the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas council member Griffin championed the development of the city's ethics ordinance, the maintenance of our city parks and the posting of meetings, meeting recordings to the city's website. And whereas council member Griffin encouraged the gathering of public input on a variety of topics through the use of public surveys and other means. And whereas council member Griffin served on city council during a period where city council made significant strides in improving public facilities and infrastructure such as acquiring and occupying our new city hall and rehabilitating the city's water tower. Now therefore be resolved that the Dexter City Council does hereby proclaim its thanks and appreciation to Jamie Griffin for her years of service to the citizens of Dexter. Thank you. You've done a good job.
Thank you.
It's nice that your family was here to be able to hear that.
Yes, thank you.
Next up, under prearranged, is Marianne Wet. We'll give our presentation on the end of the season for our farmers market and community garden.
Hi, I'm Marianne Wet. I think I know a lot of you. I'm here. So I just came from a Girl Scout meeting. It was a little pretty sleepy.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you. So I think you all saw the presentation in the packet. This was it. You can go to the next one. This was our eighteenth year baking weekend. So we met Saturday, date one on Alpine, and then we moved to Monument Park this year on Tuesdays from eleven to three. That's our mission statement. I love to take pictures of everything. Market. So there are some of our produce and some of our flower vendors that we do flower vendors in here. And what to eat and just put a summary of all the produce and other foods that we had. And I'll picture some market shoppers and our meat vendors. And then our baker and our craft vendors. And I do a newsletter every week. We have all three thousand subscribers. What do we do? But I feel that's all the vendors that are going to be there. I try to put what they're going to have. That changes a lot. And then some other fun things. And other news in Dexter. We had food assistance programs. We had SNAP, which is the supplemental nutrition assistance program, and then the double up food bug and then the senior market program. County, there's no income requirement on that one. And we, two thousand dollars Dexter citizens were able to purchase two thousand dollars in the fresh local foods, which is really great. It made the way I were, I don't think I were, we didn't have almost ten thousand less. We had, um, last year we had a little over ten thousand in attendance. This year we had less, a little less than ten thousand. It's kind of hard to count on that because of the rough estimate. I believe it was a little slower this year. I think there was a decrease in produce vendors. One of our staple vendors that was not able to come this year. And some farms are going to Chelsea and Ann Arbor. And weather was really, this season it rained a lot of Saturdays. And then we have some of the smaller farms. They have issues getting staffing or deer or other, you know, elements affected their produce. So in the end of the season, we don't have a lot of produce. And then some people cancel at the last minute. I think we need to put something in place where they have to pay before they come. A lot of seasonal vendors do, but a lot of the daily vendors pay when they get there. I think that would help because I don't think there's an incentive for them to just cancel that they paid prior. If we had like an online system or I think that would help a lot. So that's the numbers. Our total revenue was four thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars. We had about an average of nineteen on Saturday vendors. Only four on Tuesdays. We do have a really good Instagram and Facebook page that I update regularly. The Tuesday market did move to Monument Park and I thought, I thought it would be a good idea, but it didn't seem to be a good idea. I don't know if it's the hours eleven to three or we just couldn't get people interested. Vendors and it's just that problem of we don't have the customers coming. Then when the vendors come and then if we don't have customers, the vendors don't want to be there. So I don't know. I think if we moved it, there's a couple that still want to do it. If we move back to Alpine, maybe even have it be a vendor led market on Tuesday. I don't know. That's something to think about. And some highlights, we had a lot of events. I like to do a dog of the week and then some other fun pictures. We had a lot going at the next one. Oh, there's John here and there's a picture of you shopping.
Is that me? I didn't look that close. That's me. Man, thank you. Thank you.
And kids biz was a big one this year. We had, we have so many kids that want to come, which is great because it does attract extra families and customers and they get to, you know, learn how to sell product. I love it. It's a great part of the market. They don't pay a fee, you know, so that's, I mean, I, I don't think we should have them pay a fee, but you know, that's a booth. I try to manage it so there's not multiples, you know, each week, but it's really grown and a lot of kids want to come. So that's pretty exciting. I tried to get a lot of pictures of that. They're really happy. Oh, we did a lot of events. We had the Bike Medic again in May and June, live music every Saturday. We do like a scavenger hunt with a master gardener booth. It's all listed there, but we had two grants this year, a food safety grant, and then we have a wellness grant. And we did a pie eating contest for the bike centennial event. Halloween dog costume contest. We had some kid events too, the pottery. So that brings a lot of people through. More events, some music every week. And we had the Ann Arbor Symphony Con. A couple new musicians this year. Just some pictures. And then I tried to, I do a survey for the vendors and the customers at the end of the season and then some of the customer comments. The main thing is you need more produce. And I recruited vendors the beginning of the year. It's just really hard to get produce vendors. We've had some suggestions from some vendors. Some vendors, you know, like I said, that there's been a decrease in membership. But I think if we can get more customers, which is, you know, maybe more advertising dollars. I think a lot of the farms like to do farm stands too, and they don't want to come on every Saturday from eight to one. Maybe if we change the hours for, you know, I don't know that we need five hours every Saturday or some start later, maybe a shared booth type situation. Think if we could come up, be creative, you know, we could, there's a couple farms that aren't going to come back because they didn't think they did as well. I think because Ann Arbor, Chelsea, Antiquity all have Livingston one. It's now started all at the same time. It's really competitive. And then twenty twenty five is something that I think would be good to be done. Maybe coordinating more with the Chamber of Commerce or the Rotary Club or having I don't know, promoting the market more, maybe leadership coming out, doing something. I don't know. I'm trying to brainstorm if anybody has any great ideas of how to get it to grow. We're pretty, I don't know that it's going to grow much more if we don't get more produce vendors, but I'm a little concerned about that. Yeah. And I don't think we have any questions or anything I can get on.
Are people looking for a certain type of produce? I mean, there always seems to be a quite good mix with the couple of there. And what is it that they're missing? Mostly?
Um, well, and I know Rulig is taking a year off or whatever. I mean, one.
Oh.
And then Noko was our main one, and I don't know if she's coming back.
Okay, okay.
Uh, yeah, well, I think when you go to like Chelsea, there's big farms that have lots of produce. And we really just have the couple little farms. And I, I'm fearful that it's turning more into a craft park. I try to get it full, but it's a lot of baked goods and crafts and I don't know that that's going to make it.
Gotcha. Okay. I appreciate the insight.
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yeah. Thank you so much for everything you've done. I imagine it's a big undertaking. I guess I had two thoughts because it definitely seems like there's a tone of what can we do to help the farmer's market. And so I think it's great that you reached out to the current customers and I appreciated the slide which shares their comments. A couple of thoughts. One is sort of doing exit interviews with people who've left the market. Why did you leave? Well, what would entice you to come back? If I don't know, we'd be able to reach out to them. And then also too, I mean, a broader survey than just those who are attending the market. So something that's more citywide or is something in an email update that says, you know, what would entice you to come to our farmer's market? Do you attend any farmer's market? If so, what do you go? Like, do you go to the Ann Arbor's market? Do you go to the Chelsea market just to see if people in our community are farmer's market types? If so, where are they going? Why are they going there and not ours? So yeah, I guess those would be the two sort of public outreach avenues I would recommend if we have the capacity to do that.
I did get some comments from someone. I, and I think there's a little frustration in that we can't grow in the spot we're at, but I think moving to Monument Park on Tuesday was not a success. So I think coordinating with the festivals too, when there's a big festival, they don't come to the market and it hurts the market. Everyone goes downtown. I don't know if there's a way to coordinate or grow in that area. I know we're doing things with the fire station. But I don't, and I think that's the main thing is just getting more customers. I think people would stay if we had more customers. The tough one.
Yeah.
Because it's a lovely spot and when it's a good community and it's a good group, I just.
Do you think if it was located along the path more closely? I mean, it's not far from, it's not far from the park. Not far from the park, but there's, I mean, there's a lot of traffic on the weekends or on Saturday mornings on the trails. Like if we, if we ever got the trailhead at the end of Grand Street with all the trails that run through there.
Yeah, I think more visibility.
Would that, I don't know.
I wish we could move it up.
Yeah.
What would you think about how we block off for Dexter Days on Central Street?
That's what I would like, but I don't want that as possible with doing it every weekend.
Why not? I don't know.
Well, we do it Friday night for the music in the park.
Why not?
Yeah, I mean, if we were to like co-locate it at the same time as like the Friday night music series, the, the challenge is once you, once you get into the summer, you, you do get a lot of events and festivals taking place in Monument Park that, that specifically want use of Central Street. And so you end up with a conflict of there are folks who want to use Central Street for their event, but if you have the farmer's market there.
Well, I guess there'd have to be a little give or take there too. I mean, if we can expand this business and we can make it larger and we can only do it three times a month or maybe twice a month. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah. Maybe every, I think every Saturday made through October is maybe too much. But they do it in, I don't know, maybe.
Yeah.
Well, maybe you can do it twice a month. I, you know, just see how it goes if it really works. And obviously we got to come up with a new location. If that's going to be what's slowing it.
Well, some things to think about. I appreciate all your effort on it.
I just want to thank you for all the work on this. Also, I want to say that I, every time I look forward to getting that newsletter, it's wonderfully done. I love seeing the recipes. I have a couple of them and I loved it and always love to see the pet of the week. I think that's one of, I know there is a lot of work going into that. But I also think that that is one of the strengths of our farmer's market is being able to connect through that newsletter with people when they're not able to come to the market, but still have feel that connection. So thank you for that.
And you also have a presentation on the community garden, I think, right?
Yeah, next. So the garden, this is the community garden. I should know that. This is only my second year. So we actually were able to open in late April this year. The TPW was wonderful working with. And we had eight raised plots and all twelve other, eight raised beds and the twelve plots were full. The last day of the garden was October seventh. And there's some pictures. Oh, yeah, ten, we had ten full plots. Rehab plots and eight raised beds. And twenty nine primary gardeners. That was according to people sent in. We only got ten surveys back. And what did we grow? I just compiled that. This is kind of a guesstimate too. You know, by the surveys, how much would you say you harvested in a pound? How much did you share with others? A hundred plus pounds? And the garden comments here too, we sent a survey out and one of the issues was there was about four plots that people did not do anything with that they rented. So I don't, and I reached out to them. I don't know if I'd come up with a plan for that. If people aren't going to take care of their plot that they rent, do we just, do we run it? Do we? I, I don't know. The weeds were out of, I know the weeds were out of control. So overgrown pots were a nuisance. But Justin's aware and we're thinking about some ideas to maybe plow the back to the ones that we can't use. But I think overall, there's a lot of interest in it. We get a lot of interest in it. We actually had like a waiting list. So maybe next year if people don't maintain it in the beginning, we just have to go to under the waiting list or something. They don't get their deposit back, but I don't know. It's only like twenty dollars. So.
It was a great year for growing things.
Yeah, it was. Yeah.
It's easy to give away a lot of pounds if you let your zucchini get too big.
That was really good for the garden. It looked, I mean, except for the weeds that looked good. Oh, does anyone have any questions on that?
So this is Marianne's last season. We appreciate all, all that you've done. Marianne is going to, going to continue on as our DDA reporting secretary. But we have recruited another replacement farmer's market manager and community garden manager.
And she's a master gardener, so she can help. I don't know anything about, I'm not should be great for this. And she was a vendor at the market twice a month with the master gardener booth. So knows the markets, knows the vendors, and I'm going to help work with her.
Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate everything you've done. Thanks for coming tonight. Anyone have any questions before we move on? Thanks again.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move down to non-arranged participation. Please, can I step forward and state your name and address for the record if you would please?
Candace Cleveridge, three two seventeen Dover. I just want to thank Jamie for being an advocate for the residents last four years. And all the efforts, I want you to know that they haven't gone unnoticed. I wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on an outer range? Okay, we got to check online. If you have any hands up online? Jim, you can make sure he's unmuted.
Can you raise your hand, Wa, if you can hear me, please? Thank you. My name is Jim McCurgar, three five eight zero Hudson Street in the Village. Thanks very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I probably to your great relief do not have a prepared statement. Instead, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the election. Maybe in your reports, you've got something about this, but I, I want you to imagine for a moment how many precincts you think there are in Washtenaw County. And a lot of people, including elected officials, can't even come close on that. They're a hundred twenty. If you rank order all those precincts for this election that was just completed, the top ranked precinct is Dexter two. And Dexter one is not far behind. Eighty six point nine percent, essentially eighty seven percent of our voters turned out in Dexter two and darn close to that in Dexter one. So I, 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 I think as a community, we ought to be proud of that. And I am complimenting the city manager and the clerk's office on how they have handled election activities in the last few cycles and topping it off with something like this. You, you can't look at that several years in a row and not realize that we're doing something right here. A lot of people, when they think of Washtenaw County, they think of Ann Arbor. So ask yourself for just a moment, if you don't know, how far down in the list of turnout by precinct? You have to go before you hit the first precinct that has Ann Arbor in it. And you're down, I believe at number forty two out of a hundred twenty. So a bunch of our neighbors, some of the Syle Township and Webster Township and Dexter Township precincts also ranked very highly. But we're leading the pack in the absent voter side of things and the early voting side of things. We also did really, really well. I believe that we were north of ninety eight percent of our absentee ballots returned. Of those mailed out, better than ninety eight percent came back. That's a, that's a tremendous number. It's a tremendous, wonderful number. And we had five hundred seventy plus voters early vote. So by the time you throw that together, we had almost as many voters vote in advance as the average precincts in the county had in total, including Election Day. And we hadn't even gotten to Election Day. This was just absent vote and early vote. That is just really laudable. The only thing that I have going forward at the moment, other than please continue the great job, is to think about the early voting because it is a first shot. So first time we've done this. The fact that we had to early vote over in South Township at the South Township Hall on Zee Road. I wonder what impact that might have had on early vote. As a percentage of total vote, I think we could have pulled in even more than that. But for the fact that our, our city residents had to leave the city in order to cast an early vote. So if there is some consideration along the way of surveying voters about why they choose the methods that they do and what are the barriers to voting? I, I'm truly, I, I would like to see that happen because even though I'm truly happy about eighty six point nine percent turnout, I'd like that to, to be ninety six point nine percent turnout. That's what keeps our democracy rich and thriving. So any ways that we can boost that turnout? I'm in favor of it. That's it. Thank you very much, gang.
Thanks for your comments, Jim.
Yep. I'll mute out.
Are there any other hands on, online, Josh? It doesn't look like it. Is there anyone else who wants to speak online? Okay, thank you all for attending. We'll move on to page two of the agenda. Are there any conflicts of interest there? Seeing none, I move to approve all the agenda. Adam G. A motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda.
Move by Schlaf. Is there a second?
My second.
Right, Aldag, thank you. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, please call the vote to approve the agenda.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We have no public hearings this evening. We have one communication in the packet. It's our standard meeting calendar. Does anybody have any comments on the meeting calendar? Okay, seeing no hands, we'll move on to reports. Our first report tonight is from Republic Services Superintendent. Tim is online with us tonight. Welcome, Tim.
How was everybody tonight?
Very good. And you?
Good, thank you. So obviously there's two weeks reports in front of you guys. I have a couple things after as usual, but if you guys need me to field any questions, I can do it now, please.
Tim, a question for you. I don't recall the answer to this. I promise you a note. Do we pick up the legs or the legs, the, the leaves in St. Joseph Cemetery? I think we do do it, right?
Uh, yeah, at a limited basis, I think. Like I said, this is my first year really doing all this. I'm trying to figure some of the ins and outs, but yes, my understanding is we do.
They have them all lined up for you. If you haven't been by there, there's a lot of leaves in that cemetery. Okay. I'd be interested to know how many of those fit in one truck? If you pay attention.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, I mean, I think they said twenty six cubic yards. I, I'm not sure exactly how many. I know it goes a heck of a lot more than what the old machine was. Yeah, I, I wouldn't, I mean, I think they said twenty-six cubic yards. I, I'm not sure exactly how many. I know it goes a heck of a lot more than what the old machine was.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure. Okay.
Dan? Uh, Tim, I noticed on your water report that you guys read all the water meters, and I was wondering, and you don't have to have this number tonight, but I was wondering how many stopped water meters or water meters we have that are not reading correctly.
I want to go off the cuff and say about eleven. And out of those eleven, I want to say about eight of them are because of the register heads. Um, have gone, the batteries have gone dead and need to be replaced.
Are these residential meters or business meters?
Uh, well, they're residential, but they're commercial meters. Their Victoria Connells, I think, has six of them. Um, we have two in the industrial park that also need to be changed.
Are they bigger than an inch and a half?
Yes.
So what do we do in those cases? Estimate?
So we estimate till we can get the register heads in, unless we have to. The only time we could read them is we to go in their house, and I try not to do that if we don't have to. Um, it's, it's funny how we switched meter companies and because it was taken up to a year to get some of the register heads. And I called last week and just to get an ETA, thinking it was gonna take, you know, five, six months up to a year, and the guy said two weeks, so. I ordered them. They're on their way. I just gotta get that in and then get, have the guys install them.
Four, three, yeah, that's a reasonable number for how many meters we have, and I know sometimes it can be hard with the meter manufacturers and also dealing with bigger meters and businesses. They cost a lot more, and I think they're responsible to replace them themselves. Thank you, Tim.
Yep, they are. And, and, and the ones in Victoria Connells, I talked to the people that are in charge as far as paying the bills and stuff like that. Um, and I told them about the Metron foreigners, and we're gonna sit down and have a little meeting. They're quite interested in just having those swapped out, those meters, and we can get away from census altogether on that.
We also have questions for Tim? Tim, my last comment is, I think the guys did a great job collecting the leaves prior to Halloween to the extent you could. Um, there's been years where leaves have overwhelmed the ability for people to park. And you guys got, uh, got most of them up, so I appreciate that. Um, living in West Ridge, we get a lot of people, a lot of visitors, and when the leaves are raked to the curb, it makes it difficult. So thanks so much for that. Halloween was fantastic this year with the weather.
Yes, I will let the guys know.
I'm not seeing any other hands for you. Anything else to add besides your written report?
Um, one, I'd like to thank Mary Ann. I don't know if she left. It was a pleasure working with her. It's, we worked really well with everybody, with the team and everything, and, and I think things went pretty well for all of us together. Um, obviously, we're going on the leaves. That's just nonstop until, until they're done. Uh, we did have four employees and three of them were from the DPW, take state water exams last Wednesday. So I'm pretty happy about that. And that's it.
Very good. Any last questions for Tim? Thanks for attending this evening, Tim. Keep up the good work.
Yep, thanks, everybody.
Next up is our Community Development Manager, Michelle. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. I was counsel this evening. Good. Excellent. That's been one kind of, is, so, um, you've got my report in front of you before I go into the one little update that I've got. Please let me know if we've got any questions.
I do, yes, thank you. Um, so I know there have been, uh, some thoughts already shared with you, um, on the zoning ordinance and such, but um, or the text of it. Um, I, I think it would be beneficial if we have that as a discussion item for, um, the council at some point. Uh, being able to provide some of the feedback. I know it has gone through the Planning Commission. They have provided some feedback you're working on, on, um, the next step of it, but I do believe that the, the council should have the ability to provide some feedback as well, and, okay, thank you.
I can work with Justin to either put this on for your second meeting this month or the first meeting in December. Planning Commission will be okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, I also strongly recommend that both Planning Commission and Council hold a joint meeting to, to talk about these things. I think there, I don't want to say let's say unresolved feelings coming out of the senior center that it would probably be a good idea if you guys got together and just talked through some of the, um, some of what played out, how it impacted, um, uh, the question that was asked by council. Um, and just let's get back to being, um, the council and Planning Commission that work together, um, and, and not have this thing over our heads. I'll, I'll work with Justin on, on that type of a workshop, too, please. Any other questions?
I do. Are you just able to provide a bit more context to what you just said? I think anybody, many people listening might not know what's being talked about.
We're talking about the text amendments, um, that the Planning Commission looked at and discussed.
And, and what gen, topics do they generally address?
Um, there, um, it covers a number of different topics, mostly procedural. There were a couple of definitions we added. One was for flatland. The other definition was a cleanup, citing proper section. There were, uh, cleanup and more clarification provided for things like the cycling process, P U B process. As well as under the Enforcement and Administration article, uh, so that people understood, um, I'm sorry, not enforcement. Yes, enforcement administration, so that people would understand, um, more clearly what the play, uh, zoning compliance process was and what's required of them when they submit.
Okay, and you're referencing the senior center implies that there were some lessons learned from that process or?
No, implying that there is unresolved feelings between, um, Planning Commission and Council that probably a good conversation between that.
I think, I think she's actually referring blatantly to the, the front door discussion.
Right, yeah.
And the fact that the, the current ordinance doesn't doesn't have a way for council to help weigh in on that. It's left to Planning Commission, and I think when we sent it back to them, they didn't, they didn't even approve it on the agenda, and they didn't, they didn't hold the public hearing.
Got it.
And I know at least one council member that feels that the process shouldn't be that way. They ought to at least, if we requested that, at least hold the public hearing. And they, they're a recommending body to us, so if we ask for help and they don't do it, then where are we left? You know, what are we left with?
Right.
So that some of those discussions, I think, are what she's alluding to, if I'm saying it lightly without.
Right. But, I mean, yes, some of that I was aware of and some was a distant memory, but I think any members of the public will have a better sense of what is being talked about.
Okay, so, um, um, the, um, economic development update, the Business Networking will be December fifth, four to six P M. I hope you will join us. We're, we're stepping outside of our, uh, Business Networking, um, format, if you will. We've engaged with four different businesses, and the invites will go out this week. Um, Ann Arbor Spark has a budget, and the Chamber of Commerce is looking at the possibility of matching that budget, which provides the opportunity for the businesses to split the costs with Chamber and Spark, um, uh, for things like, um, a flight of, of, um, whiskey tasting at High Line, um, charcuterie trays at, um, their cell of pasta, a beer flight at Reddick Ales, and, um, bread sample or pizza at Radman's. And, uh, it's like businesses that are a speed key to come will be given the tickets when they, um, when they come that night, and their tickets would be good for each one of the places. So we're hoping that, that this generates a, a new vibe for our business networking, and if it's successful, it may be staying beyond just business networking and maybe become a regular kind of pre-holiday event. Either way, I think it will benefit the businesses, the downtown, um, the community at large. The other thing is the Dexter High School students in the special needs program will be here on Friday at, um, I'm sorry, one thirty P M. It's slightly different time. Usually they've come in the morning. This time they're coming in the afternoon. If there are any members of council who could participate, um, they're coming in to learn more about government. They have a list of questions, have them circulate them to you. They want to know how they can be active members of the community. Could they participate? Could they, they be council people? Those are the kind of things that they're looking to find out more. Let me know if you can be here, please. And that is pretty much, that's pretty much it.
I have already told Michelle when I'm gonna be in St. Joseph. I will do everything I can to get back, but I'm I'd be the later part of two o'clock if I'm here early, so if there's anybody else that can make it, I know it's a Friday.
Well, I already told Jenna I'd be there.
Okay, great, thanks. Thank you very much. Jamie?
Uh, yeah, can Michelle heard, um, you, either one, um, the DDA update regarding, um, the purchase offer for thirty forty-five Broad Street? Any updates on that or any more specific details? Or just, I know members of the public are interested in that development, and so any additional details we can provide?
There aren't any other details other than what is in my report. Um, we're waiting or anticipating, I should say, the developer to revise his proposal. And have it resubmitted so that it can be looked at by the committee again before it could eventually go to, um, to the DDA board for consideration. I can go over a couple of things.
It's, um, it's a two, it's a two-part offer. The initial offer was to subdivide the thirty forty-five Broad Street property per se, at the power lines, and pair it with the gravel parking lot and the house we bought on the other side of Broad. So I don't know if that's north or west or whatever, whatever you want to call that direction. That half, there was one sum of money offered for those four parcels. I'll say one, two, three, and four. And then the other, the other, the second part of the offer was written on, on what I'm gonna call the, the properties on the other side of the power line, Jamie. The other half of thirty forty-five Broad closest to the trailhead. And then the city-owned property that's right next to Reddick Ales. So it was, it was done in a two-phase type thing. I will say that the offer for the first part was not much more than the five hundred and sixty thousand that the DDA paid for the, just the three parcels on the other side of Broad. Just without giving up the, the number in fairness to the developer, but I could tell you, we paid five sixty for the three parcels on the east side of Broad or on the, we're gonna call that side of Broad. You know what I'm talking about?
Yep.
Okay. And the feedback we gave them on the, the other, the phase two part was that it really complicates their offers because of the, the, the fact that the city would have to vote to sell it. The DDA does not. If they pair city property with DDA property, that's an added challenge, and, and that it almost becomes like a three-party agreement, but for council to be part of that agreement, we'd have to have some of it be subject to the vote, which, which we're very familiar with, right? I understand that. So we gave them some guidance on that. We suggested that maybe some of that be separated a little bit, and my comment on their initial offer was that you know, they weren't offering much more than what we paid on the three parts, the three parcels. They wanted the the encumbered property, if you will, the one that has the, you know, some soils issues for not as much, which is not a total surprise, right? But that's the basis of the offer, if I'm describing right, and feel free to ask more questions.
Are these the folks who attended the public, um, session at the library?
I'm sorry?
Did these folks attend the public session at the library?
The first one.
In Ju, was it June? I don't know when this was.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's the group. Yeah, sorry. Yes, I misunderstood. Yes, yes.
So they were in attendance?
Yes, the, the name, the name is not a secret. It's the, um.
Right, I just was confirming that they were.
Andy, uh.
Anthony Randazzo.
Anthony, Anthony.
And Andy Millia, and Millia represents construction side, these Franklin properties.
Yeah, but yes, you're, you're exactly right. It's that, it's that. And I don't believe the DDA board's even seated yet, and we have to get to a meeting next week, so we're, you know.
And this would be a purchase for the property outright, so that anything they're looking to do, this is not a partnership with the city for development, over and above what anybody else has to do when they own the property and they go through the approval processes.
Correct, and, and the DDA, you know, the DDA owns those four, I guess, is fifth, five parcels. If you count the D, the DTE parcel as a fifth parcel over there, the DDA owns those five parcels outright, so they, they can sell it independent of what
Right.
what we, um, feel, so to speak.
But at one time, there was it was in, at one time, the development, I mean, years ago, the development was going to be a partnership between the city and.
We've, we've, we've never found somebody that's wanted to buy the property outright. We've never had an offer on.
Right, but this is what they were.
This would be the first one, and, and yes, if, if it went through, as you very clearly illustrated, it would be then subject to you know, the laws of our zoning ordinance, just like any other property that is owned by somebody other than the city.
Right, right. Okay.
If you have other questions, just ask.
Yep, that's right. No, I'm just mostly, um, I know people are interested, and so I just wanted to highlight.
It was a two-page, it was a, literally a two-page letter. I don't think it was any longer than that. They got, they got, well, there might have been some, you know, assigns and severability, all that, legal stuff on the backside, but that wasn't what we were really talking about, though. And we didn't have our attorney there. We just, we just mainly meant to understand it. You know, we received the letter. Okay, tell us in your words what you just wrote.
Thanks.
Yep. All sudden? Okay, thanks for attending this evening. Um, are there any Board Commissioner or other reports under J three note? Seeing none, move down, same age report on J five, please.
Sure, so, um, Jim McCurgar kinda, kinda stole my thunder, but the election went well, and I want to thank Josh and, um, Jenna Keewich, uh, our new city clerk, um, for their assistance in running a really good election. Um, things went, you know, very smoothly from my, from what I saw on, on Election Day. Um, uh, we're able to deliver the results to the county, uh, pretty early in the evening, which was nice. Um, and, uh, yeah, we had a really, really high turnout, which is great to see. I do have a couple of attachments to my report, um, but I know City Council at last meeting wanted to see, um, the uh, location of the wells at the Sloan Kingsley, um, prospective development. Um, and Tom Corver was able to, to send those over and was able to include those in the packet. Other than that, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
When do you anticipate the permit coming for demo?
Uh, I was told, uh, middle of this week for the demo permit.
Great. We'll call if, if Wednesday hits. Oh.
Um, yeah, so they gotta discontinue all the utility.
That's part of the demo package.
That's what I, I thought that that was discussed last council meeting, so the actual demo could be another.
Yeah, I, I'm using demo generally as somebody doing something within the fence.
Presume they've got all the people to discontinue utilities all lined up already. Presume they've got all the people to discontinue utilities all lined up already.
Yes, it will. So, um, uh, electric and gas are already disconnected. Their demo contractor is also going to be the one who does the water and sewer disconnects upfront. So they're, they're going to do that first and then cap, cap and cut and then demo the building.
And, and officially, we still don't know who the write-in candidate is, is that true?
Uh, not, not, not officially. Um, the County Board of Canvassers does the write-in tally.
So, I guess I'm leading up to what I was gonna say under my report a little bit, but you know, next meeting would typically be when we swear and we do anticipate the county will have the election certified later this week or?
I, I would expect so. I, so, so I, I know they were working on it end of last week. I, I, it sounds like they, with, with the new election law, um, they can accept or we, we can accept um, absentee overseas and military ballots up through I think today was the deadline or, or tomorrow. And so um, we're going to confirm that we have received all that we are going to receive, deliver that last batch to the county and then that should be it.
Thank you. What's still yours?
All I got.
Any other questions for Justin? Okay, so at our next meeting, then I'll move down to my report real quick. First of all, wow, congratulations. Let's say the same to Zach if he was here. Congratulations on being re-elected. Uh, Jamie already said, thank you in some words, but appreciate all the effort, time, commitment. You're always here. I don't think you missed too much, which is by and large the biggest measure of participation and input is being here because if you're not here, you don't say anything, right? The value is having more people, so. On the twenty-fifth, we'll have our swearing-in ceremony at the beginning. See the new council numbers and and if you're still on with their, with their business, so. Hold on on the election and everybody voted. Does anybody have any questions for me on anything? Hey, if you ever do, just reach out. Are there any council member reports?
Thank you. I have a verbal report on November first. I had a chance to reconnect, reconnect with Arbor Hospice, an organization that many years ago um, I had a chance and privilege to volunteer at. So I connected with Emily Olson, the Director of Philanthropy there. Um, and it was fantastic to get an update on what are the activities they're doing? And especially since they have joined partnership with Hospice of Michigan and all the amazing services that they provide our communities, Dexter including. Um, so with conversations with her, um, they are doing outreach to also many organizations and would like that at some point potentially for their CEO, Mr. Miller to give a presentation to the city council. Um, most likely this would be sometime later on in the first quarter of the year. There are also, Emily and I had conversations about potential changes that in the next decade or so could come about in Medicare's coverage for hospice. And it's, it's a and it's an issue that I deeply care as somebody who have seen many families going through that services. So we'll hear more from them hopefully and, and be able to connect and hear firsthand what are the things they're doing and not only for county and even Michigan now that they are collaborating with Hospice of Michigan, but also for Dexter specifically.
Very good. Any other councilor reports at this time? All right, we will slip over page three of our agenda. The consent agenda is next with four items on the consent agenda.
I move re-approved the four consideration items on the consent agenda, bills and payroll in the amount of nine hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. That was number one. Number two, approval of the Washington Regional Resource Management Authority budget. Number three, resolution appointing representatives to the worm aboard and number four, repair of wastewater treatment plant variable frequency drive from Galco Industries for an amount not to exceed five thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-four cents.
Bye, Albert. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Please call the vote to approve the four items on the consent agenda.
Hallberg? Yes. Griffin? Yes. Schlaf?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries. We have no unfinished business, so we're down to new business item M one. Which is consideration of an application for combined preliminary and final site plan and special land use review for Ziggy's Coffee at seventy sixty-one Dexter Ann Arbor Road. Someone that would like to move a motion to start the discussion or advance this item?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I'm reading page one twenty-three. Um, that I move that in consideration of the recommendation for planning commission along with the information provided by the applicant staff, staff, CWA, O H M, and D A F D, the city council moves to approve the application for a special land use. P S L U two four dash zero 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 two for Ziggy's Coffee Drive Thru located at seventy sixty-one Dexter Ann Arbor Road. Parcel, I'm assuming is zero eight, zero eight, zero eight, two hundred, zero two one. Outlet number two, upon a finding that it meets the standards or special land use in the section eight point oh three and the specific use provision for drive-through restaurant in section fourteen point five seven, subject to the following conditions. The application shall obtain approval of a revised combined site plan that addresses the concerns one cited hereby by staff, two cited in the CWA, O H M, and D A F D review letters and three cited by the city council.
Hey, that was well done. Motion, page one twenty-three, motion by Aldag. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Want to think things separately? Or are you going to do this separate?
That first, is, is the special land use the appropriate one to do first?
Um, yes, that's fine. That's fine. So, um, as you introduced it, Mayor Kio, this is a special one-induced application for a fly-through uh, facility, in this case, a coffee cafe. Planning Commission did consider this on October twenty-third, they held a special meeting. As many of you will recall, the October meeting, we didn't have a quorum, and so we scheduled the special meeting. The specially induced criteria in most cases can all be satisfied, subject to the site plan being revised to meet the concerns cited by staff, the consultants. And any comments or questions or comments you might make for that tonight. Would you like me to go into more with the site plan?
Just to hit some, to hit some highlights of the comments that were made, please, if you would, and, and what you think were the most relevant points?
So for the special land use, it hits, it meets the master plan very easily. As it pertains to the zoning standards, again, it can subject to the updates on revised site plan, but one thing that won't be on a revised site plan and that is the land division that's going to have to happen. Uh, when planning commission considered it and made their recommendation, the the prevailing thought at that time was they were going to have to create a condominium. The reason they'd have to create a condominium is a land division can't be approved if it creates a parcel that would be non-conforming. We didn't have verification of all of the dimensions of the road frontage along Dexter Ann Arbor Road. And as a matter of saying rather than sorry, make sure that the condition of approval addressed it, i.e. the condo does. We have, staff has been able to verify the frontage and a simple or traditional land division can be accommodated even with Ziggy's taking out a section. The shopping center parcel will still have at least two hundred linear feet of road frontage. It doesn't have to be contiguous, but it has to be, it has to meet that total amount. So it will do that, hence the land division. And that is one of the conditions of approval that you'll need to do tonight. And it is indeed.
What drives the two hundred feet?
The ordinance, uh, for the extra kind of a corridor, road corridor for the commercial.
So, so, so let me ask a different way of question. So there's how many outlets there? Okay, two and the parking that's on the other side of the main drive doesn't count as an outlet, right? Or, or the parking lot, that, that's part of the other property.
Yeah, that one hasn't been created yet, but
Okay, so, so what happens when outlet one gets developed? How does it meet the two hundred?
The, the outlet one would have to have two hundred feet on the employee. Being that the shopping center already has its two hundred feet on Dexter and Arbor Road. But Dan Hoistide doesn't have to be two.
Okay, so the outlet that's remaining is in the corner.
Correct. Its boundaries may skew a little bit, but they can't move it too much where it removes the two hundred.
Feet on Dan Hoistide.
Correct.
Well, what if they want to go in the corner?
Who wants to go in the corner? The outlet one?
Yeah.
The outlet one.
Is, is not in the corner. It's, 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 I don't, I don't know the
Its frontage is on the employee and it's, it terminates, quote, to use your terminology, in the corner.
Okay.
Outlet two goes from that corner somewhere along the frontage, but they're not taking the entire uh, outlet two size as it's on the approved plan. They're having a smaller.
So that's part of my question then, is, is this yellow boundary that's shown on the very first cover page? Is that a property description boundary or what? Why, why, why doesn't it go to the corner and like, like they, do they not own the whole outlet?
So.
I don't, I'm not following that part of it, I guess.
You're talking about this?
Yeah, that, that, yeah, that, I get that it goes to the center of the right away, because that's where that parcel.
This is called, they, uh, have a purchase agreement with the property owner. That's why it's not going all the way either.
So does that create another outlet then? Does it create unusable space?
You know, it's, it's it's continues to be the one that a lot of these have initially. The outlet would get the one here.
So I guess my, that's my comment is we're not really maximizing the outlet. Is that a fair statement?
In a short term, would anybody get away? If the, if the property owner wanted to create another, a third outlet between two and one, they wouldn't need to create a condominium. And that could be done. It's just not something they're contemplating at this moment.
Okay, is there a minimum size of an outlet?
Depending on the form that they would use. If it's another Ziggy's, I think it's a minimum of sixty. It wouldn't have to be the two hundred feet of frontage because they're not doing another, they wouldn't do a duplicate shopping center on the outlet person.
So what, so what is that, what the longest dimension of that property, what, what is that length for Ziggy's?
The four Ziggy's?
Along Dexter and Arbor Road. Did it happen at all? I mean, it says gross area point seven four acres. And then, then you take out the right away, which is point three three acres and it's point four one acres. Makes sense to me. It looks like there's more of the, most of the property is outside the right way. Makes sense. It looks like about two, this looks like about two fifty to me.
So.
Just judging by the parking spaces that are across it from it.
Four hundred and fifty-nine feet along Dexter and Arbor Road.
From the corner all the way to the drive or to the
To the other side of the drive, which is what uh, Carnegie owns. Um, the shopping center has to have at least two hundred feet.
On Dexter and Arbor?
On Dexter and Arbor, either all one line or cumulatively. What, uh, what's ever left over, they either, they either, that's going to be the Ziggy's or Ziggy's will be a certain amount and whatever left over, you have more than two hundred feet for the shopping center.
Remind me again how the limits of our Dexter and Arbor Road corridor ordinance. Remind me the limits of our Dexter and Arbor Road corridor ordinance. It goes from bushes on the, on that side to where, past the fire station?
Yes.
And does it go all the way to Meadow, Meadowview?
It goes all the way up to Kensington.
Oh, all the way up to Kensington.
Right.
So every property along there has to have two hundred foot of road?
No, it depends if it's a shopping center form.
I just, I'm, I'm not trying to make you look up everything.
That's okay.
I didn't remember this part of that. And why, I didn't remember why it's significant. I don't remember the basis of it.
So the shopping center is what's considered a large format building form and that requires a two hundred foot lot width. If you were going down to a single purpose building, which is what the Ziggy's is, their lot width is if you're looking at a commercial mixed use, presuming that's allowed in the Dexter and Arbor Road corridor, you're looking at a hundred foot. Minimum one. So it depends, it's, it's, it's form base for that. Um, the other thing that is happening with this applicant and shopping center owner are proposing to dedicate that proposed right of way. Currently, that's all part of an easement with Washington on Road Commission. That would be dedicated to the city and the right of way line will be one foot off the sidewalk as we have in other places in the city. So that's a significant I guess you'd say, public safety benefit of the project.
And that part of the roadway we accepted from the county?
We did.
Yes.
We did, right? I remember doing that.
And those are, those are basically the habits for the special needs.
So the council, did you have questions? I didn't mean to drag that into ones. So the councilors have questions, I didn't mean to drag that into ones. Okay, so the, the question at hand is whether the special land use, which is related to the drive through, right? The question, the question, the motion on the table, starting off is related to the drive through. As a special land use, that's, Jamie.
Yeah, so I guess, uh, my comment is related to the goals for this corridor as stated in our master plan. One of which, um, says the objective is to encourage mixed use development. And so I think what strikes me about this application is that. I think in this general area, we have an opportunity for what I think is called sprawl repair. This big parking lot in, in front of more of a strip mall, um. And I think the approval or, uh. Disapproval of it reminds me a bit of when self-storage came to the business park. And where that was located, front and center in the business park, and that's what everybody is seeing as they're driving in. And just in general, we don't have a lot of opportunities for development in the city, and given that this is special land use. I think we have an opportunity to apply some discretion, I guess. So I don't know if it's at the, you know, stage of special land use, or if it's at the stage of the actual site plan approval. But I would have liked, there been, there to have been some mechanism to encourage. Or even require that how these outlets are filled in is in a mixed use manner. It's clear that there are a lot of housing goals that the city has and that the residents share. And as I stated at our last meeting with the potential Sloan Kingsley annexation, where it seemed like their goal was dense. Mixed family housing at the back of a single family development. Which I think just doesn't make sense as a development pattern, I don't think you see it typically even in our, um, city. This is the area that strikes me for mixed family and mixed use development density right off the main road. Ease of access to all these other points of interest, so. You know, I, I think probably many residents would like a drive through coffee, I think. I'm generally not opposed to that, I think it's just. I would like to see a, a more efficient use of these, all of these parcels, given how limited we are in. In the parcels that are available and in how. Great the goals are for how many things we're trying to accomplish that I think we need to be more efficient.
I generally agree with all that, but what do we do about it right now?
So the juxtaposition you're in, if you will, is you have a zoning ordinance. That classifies the Dexter and Arbor corridor, but this property is part of a PUD, which is its own zoning ordinance. So the PUD covers the use and the corridor covers the forms that, that, that. The property owners, with the shopping center and the, um, the other side, or no, is. Are aware that the city is encouraging more mixed use. Um, and have encouraged them to be creative. But ultimately, that it's not within there, um, it's not in the business model.
Just to follow a question of that, I mean, I also understand that private property, all that, I've said it many times. Do you, and I don't know if you can answer this, but the way that this is, this plan is situated. And drawn up. Do you think that there's anything significant that would. Create a definite barrier for more misuse with housing in the same, on the same. Up, an outlet of the same property, if that makes sense, does that make sense?
I, I don't know that I can answer that.
Okay.
Because it.
But there is, I guess, let me put it a different way, if this were approved as is. Would you think there would be ways to creatively, creatively look at the outlet si- space that is left? To allow for mixed use with housing?
So we can look at it, but ultimately, again, the PUD dictates the use and their commercial.
Sure.
Not mixed use, so, um.
This is just a hypothetical, really, because.
If the applicant, or I'm not, yeah, if the property owner was willing. If they had a, um, a body of the parcel that wanted to do that, we would absolutely work with them. Because there are ways to work through that process because it's a PUD to allow for different use.
Okay, I mean, that really answers all it was just trying to say is like, if approving this does not put us past the point of no return. With that idea in general, knowing that it's private property and that it has to be brought to us, et cetera, et cetera.
I guess to follow up on that, so then all the outlets there are part of this PUD.
Yes, there's only one other.
I guess the potential third one would also be part of the PUD, thank you, um. Is there a mechanism to, I mean, can only the, like, holder of the PUD initiate some amendment to? I mean, is there an amendment to a PUD process, and is it only if it's initiated by them, can the city go to them with? I mean, is there any mechanism where we can be proactive to?
You do that in your master plan, but there isn't a way for the city to initiate a zoning of the property. It would, it would have to be in conjunction with that.
Okay, so master plan though is not a legally binding document.
Not the same way as the zoning one exists.
Right, so even if we amended the master plan to say. Only mixed use development, this, again, hypothetical.
The, the land use that has already been approved through the PUD still covers that.
Right, so it doesn't override.
The master plan would have.
Right, right.
So storm waters handled as part of the original design. Okay, and, um. The water main that serves the whole PUD kind of bisects the two outlets, comes off the corner on diagonal, you see? So I mean, that makes it hard to build over there anyway.
It does make it hard, it doesn't make it impossible, but if somebody has the funding and needed to jog it. It can be done. Well, let's, let's play some hypothetical real quick since we're talking about housing. Let's say you did have somebody who wanted to do housing and commercial, and they were willing to do attainable housing. Moving that, um, public infrastructure. Could be something that, um, the city helps out with, not indirect funding, but through housing. But there are ways to, to encourage it, if that was one of the barriers.
Uh, it's interesting to me that we've chosen. The perpendicular parking off the dry aisle.
Oh, you mean, yeah.
Ninety degree?
Yeah, yeah.
Was there any discussion at planning commission about that?
Um, the planning commission did not have a problem with the perpendicular off. Um, I don't think they saw it in any different, uh, light than going down the dry aisle. Uh, currently, uh, that's there, what they were most concerned of was, was the sidewalk wide enough? Um, the applicant had initially proposed five foot sidewalks, but there wasn't a curb, so the, the decision or the choice. Um, was either put wheel bumper blocks in or widen the sidewalk seven feet. Planning commission gave direct, um, a very clear direction to the applicant. That, um, not to go to the bumper blocks, but with the curb and make that sidewalk seventeen. They felt that that was more conducive to the walkability aspect that they tried to incorporate into the design. Was the, the walkability along the sidewalk on Dexter and Arbor Road, there's an internal sidewalk that comes right to their order window. Right to their patio.
And, uh, is the dumpster location accessible with the island behind it?
The dumpster is, um, accessible from the, the dry aisles, um.
I see a fire truck path on the, but I don't see a turning movement in and out of the dumpster.
And that was one of the other conditions of approval that was recommended by, uh, planning, when they do the revised plan, they have to be able to demonstrate. Return movement for the dumpster.
Seems, um. The, the ninety degree parking seems counter to what has been approved in the rest of the site. I mean, that, that's like a dry aisle around the side. And most of the dry aisles don't have direct parking off of it.
Uh, where the medical clinic was, they have a few spots that are perpendicular.
Yeah, I didn't like that either.
But you got the sidewalk here.
I did get the sidewalk, yeah. Okay, those were my questions. Oh, what's the, what's the approximate value of this thing?
I'm sorry?
What's approximate value of this thing?
Um, we have not seen a quick disappearance, I have no ideas. The applicants are, the people who are going to own, um, Ziggy's. Garnett and Miranda Roberts are here.
Welcome.
You've got any questions for them?
How much does it cost to build a Ziggy's?
Yeah, uh, Michelle, I'm just trying to find, I followed up a question for the Dexter Crossing PUD. And I'm trying to find where in, uh. The Carlisle-Wartman report, and I think I'm not finding it because I'm not looking at that part of the packet. Where they referenced saying, you know, referring to this one thing isn't going to be helpful because this is actually ruled by the Dexter Crossing PUD. And so what you sent seemed more site planish to me, I guess, I was expecting that there were some text document. That was describing all of these other features of this Dexter Crossing PUD. Is that something that exists?
The, the Dexter Crossing PUD agreement or the Dexter Crossing PUD plan, I'm not sure, I'm understanding.
The agree, the agreement, so I think what you sent was a more like a site plan.
But I had said, you had asked, I thought you wanted the site plan. The PUD agreement lays out what the developer and what the city, what their two commitments were. Um, back in the day, it referenced the site plan. Um, uh, which includes the Dexter Crossing Commercial, it identified. Um, the different zoning districts or like the residential that, uh, where you live behind. Uh, behind the shopping center that was either going to be a condominium, which is developed to do, uh, Victoria, Victoria Congress. Or Dexter Crossing Residential Subdivision. There's another parcel where the dentist offices on Dan Hoy. Um, that's, that was professional office, it is. Um, and the shopping center itself is C one, and that's what the, uh, development agreement did. And in addition to, um, talking about utilities and the types of permits they have to get, et cetera.
Right, okay, here I found it, so for the special land use standards, this is why I feel like it would be, it would be hard to evaluate because. It says here, um, one requirement is the special land use will be consistent with the stated intent of the zoning district, and then the Carlisle-Wartman's comment is. Due to the site being part of a PUD approved twenty five years ago, we recommend that it is more appropriate to ask whether the use is consistent with the Dexter Crossing PUD. Rather than the intent of the PUD zoning district. Um, I guess that's what I was looking to reference is. What is that document that's describing the whole point of the Dexter Crossing PUD in text? So that I could, you know, cross-reference what's being proposed with that, I'm not saying nobody's done that, but that would be my.
It's going to be the combination of what they called at that time, the area plan. We don't do new area plans anymore. Doesn't matter, we, we, we go based on a fine site plan now. So it was an area plan that had a basic layout where the residential would go, where the commercial would go, where the professional office. Um, it dictated things like, uh, what the development responsibility was for utilities, roads. Uh, sidewalks, streets, tap fees, et cetera. The area plan is what identified the zoning, which was C, is C one for the commercial. Um, PB, which is professional business office, for the portion that, um, the dentist office. And R one, R one. I don't recall, I, I think it was R one meeting for the residential portion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we've asked a lot of good questions, what's, um, we have a motion on the table, I'll dag second by Schlaf. To approve the special land use, uh, that was shown on the, the motion that was on page one twenty three, I believe it was, top. Special land is motion number one, is that correct? That's the one you read? Okay, so I call those both on that. Who's going?
Schlaf?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Griffin?
No.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries. If we now need a motion to approve the combined. Or I say approve or deny, I guess, combined preliminary final site plan. Someone like to make that motion? Also on page one twenty three.
I make that motion, if I don't have to read the whole thing.
No, you were just saying on one twenty three.
They just on to twenty three site plan motion, um, so number, number one.
Yep.
Um, which says, um. That it meets the requirements and then continues with all the, um. Folded shelves and, um, deviations and waivers and the conditions of approvals. Um, and, and on page one twenty four.
Okay, and that was an approved.
Approved.
That means, okay, thank you.
Sorry, yeah.
And just to work there on the deviations, the, I'll wait till you get a second, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let me just, thank you, so a motion by all dag, is there a second? Awesome, so the Marshall, thank you.
Okay, the way the, the conditions of approval are, um, written up for you tonight. Is based on what the planning commission recommendation was, so as it comes to deviations or the waivers. It was a, their recommendation is a waiver from the loading and unloading space requirement of section. Five point oh nine point one shall be approved. Um, understand that that means the loading space on their site. They are working with the app, uh, with the property owners, uh, currently to come up with an agreement, and it's a condition of approval. Are they down in your conditions where they need to provide them? Uh, before they can move on to their next steps. Um, a deviation to allow for an entryway on one side of the dumpster enclosure for staff access. When dumpster enclosures are required to be enclosed on three sides, um, and that that should be approved. Uh, deviation to allow thirty one percent, thirty one point five percent transparency when fifty percent is required. For section eleven, eleven point B five DI, uh, shall be approved. And a waiver from the landscaping along pedestrian walkway requirement in section six point one oh B shall be approved. And the reason for that waiver is there just isn't any room to put any landscape.
Okay, but there, but all the landscaping shown on the image on the front page is, is part of it, right?
If that is a rendering, the landscape plan that's in the site plan is much more detailed and yes.
I mean, there is landscapes when I, yes.
Just not in that one spot.
Yeah, okay. What, what's the, um. Who's gonna? Who's going to, I don't know if approves is the right word. The agreement between, I guess, the owners of the PUD and. Uh, and Ziggy's related to the loading, unloading.
Um, it will be submitted to, to the zoning administrator, that it will be reviewed by, um. Uh, city attorney to make sure that it's legally binding.
They, they could, but I mean, they can do it, I guess, I guess. I mean, it, it, when I, when I'm. I mean, when I when I'm in that parking lot, that drive aisle gets a lot of use.
Right, right.
And and you're you're. We're already encumbering it with the back out parking. And the dumpster. So where's the loading and how's deliveries going to get there?
So it um. On the letter, there was a graphic that showed two axes, one on the driveway. And one to take up parking spaces.
Didn't see that. What she is saying on? Is it on the plan? What packet? Page one thirty eight of the packet?
I'm sorry?
Page one thirty eight of the packet? Okay, no, that's a close action. Well, I, you know, like, like, I would not think that the the one in the drive aisle is a good spot, not that either one of them is great, but. One of them, I wouldn't think you'd want something parked in the middle of the drive aisle.
No, so it's, yeah, one twenty one, page one twenty one. There's a little. Hold out, there are two axes, one shows it in the drive lane and the other shows it. In the parking area, don't get confused that it's going to. Uh block a drive lane, it's just to show that it would, that they would.
No, but that that. Outer, and there's there's parking area of that. And then there's a.
Right.
A road.
They're proposing two and. Staff is going for parking spaces, not something that would encumber the dry line. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm just asking what we're approving, I mean, we're not, we're waving it, that's why I asked you, who is approving it?
City attorney and staff will approve.
Do they know that it's only one X and not two?
Yeah, it's not, it's not two, they're going to. They understand it will be one. If you want a specific. Um comment made to qualify the conditions of approval, you could do that and. Make it clear that. The loading or unloading. Is.
Well, my my opinion is there's plenty of parking out there. I mean, there's more than enough parking.
Right.
I don't know why you wouldn't. Have the loading area be where the parking is. That they're proposing, which is off the road, out of the way.
Right.
And let let and let people just park in the normal spots that they're shared use because the whole concept of that is a shared use parking. And let their loading, let their loading be closer to the to the coffee shop. And and just let people park and walk across to the. Just like you do to, like, if I'm going to get a pizza or or if I'm going to get zoning or food zone, or if I'm going to Chayla's. I don't park right next to the.
Right, I.
My logic following at all?
Yeah, I follow what you're saying. I guess at this particular point, that was not something the planning commission or staff. Um that was an issue if council would prefer that the. Parking for. People utilizing the coffee shop happens within the Dexter Crossing Commercial area. You're not going to need reason for that, you've only got that as part of the. The development, um the shared access agreement that already exists for the property would be amended to add. Uh the Ziggy's parcel. If you wanted the.
I mean, I like the, I like the. Drive through lane. Out of the way, it gets cars out of the parking, I mean, it gets it into their own queue and. I mean. I suppose it could back up onto it. If they're that successful, that's great, but. By and large, there's a decent amount of stacking that I perceive along that current entrance. But. I would think it would make more sense. To have a loading zone off of that drive aisle and let the rest of the parking. That's already there be used and let people. Walk across like you do everywhere else in that shopping center. That's my opinion.
Um I just wanna um share based on. Seeing the traffic using Jet Pizza and Food Zone. That a lot of people do park at front of their doors and go grab their thing running in and out. Um every time I have gone, there are at least three, four cars, and especially in the winter, it's a whole line of cars. Even for the classes, they people just to stop by their the front doors. Um versus really actually going to park and then walk into the.
Yeah, just.
I mean, should not be, but in practice, they do.
That's true. Just my opinion, Jamie.
Yeah, I think my general thought that I had even, you know, before hearing this discussion was just. I'm generally not a fan of combined preliminary and final site plan approval in a single meeting. This is really the first opportunity that council has to sort of dissect this, understanding that, you know, planning commission has done their due diligence. Especially when there, you know, any number of. Deviations, waivers, conditions, etc. You know, how does it work if if just preliminary site plan approval is granted? And if if we were to say we want this to come back for final. What amount could? Change between preliminary and final?
I'm I'm sorry, I'm not following this.
I'm just saying it's.
She's asking, what if we only gave preliminary site plan and asked some of these things to go back to planning?
Yeah, I guess, what is the process? If we if we grant preliminary, does it have to go back to to planning for final or?
We like the business, but we're not thrilled with the layout, so we say we'll give you preliminary approval, but not.
I wouldn't even, I I because they applied for combined, I wouldn't. Bottom with the preliminary, what I would suggest is that you then postpone the site plan and send it back to planning commission with the direction. For how you want. The parking change and the loading change. Unless you are comfortable this evening. Having that conversation with the applicant and them providing you feedback, but whether they would do it or wouldn't do. Depending. And then you would make a. You would make your approval subject to that different condition.
Wow. I was already wondering how people might think about postponement due to the fact that we're missing two council members. Who usually weigh in heavily on this type of topic, and we already have people here at the table who don't always. Have opinions having opinions, so maybe not send it back to planning commission, but just wait until we can have a full council to discuss it. And see then if we can give back something constructive for the applicants to respond to. I'm just concerned, especially because council member Michelle is usually has some great insight with things like this. I mean, that's. I would, I will. I mean, yeah, I I have, okay, I move, we postpone, I mean, do we have to withdraw the other motion or vote on?
No, that 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 motion would just stay on.
Okay, well, then I would like to move that we postpone what the. The motion on the table, is that what I say?
Yeah.
To the next council, regular council meeting on. Uh November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Are you postponing the action on the motion or are you postponing?
Yeah, postponing action.
Yeah, just the action on the motion. I'd like a discussion with full council.
And to what meeting?
The next one. The twenty fifth.
In which the second, I'm sorry.
I was.
Discussion on the motion.
Yeah, and then I was just gonna say, as many of these sort of outstanding items that can be addressed between now and then, if they can be addressed, that would be helpful.
There would not, there would, there would not be time for them to revise the site plan and have it back in time to get in your package.
Got it.
Any discussion on the postponements? Okay, please call the vote to postpone.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Aldag? Yes, Hubbard?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you for your patience with us. Appreciate you considering all this. Okay, so we'll see you back on the twenty fifth then. Okay. You heard my questions, I mean.
Besides the loading and the parking, are there any other? Concerns that council has that staff can address with the applicant so that when it comes back. In two weeks. Maybe they'll have an concept or something that. You'd be able to see.
I I like that you can walk in from the one side, I like that. The drive through is fine, that part of it's fine, I mean, I mean, it's not that complicated, I don't like the attention off the drive out. That's the biggest thing. Okay.
We get two trucks a week and one pallet of the trucks, so a rubbish shipment and a rolling shipment. And they're just taking off the truck with a pallet jack and wheel into the building. Probably their lesson.
Well, we continue our discussion on the twenty fifth and open there. Uh new business item M two is consideration of acceptance of the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five budget document. I don't know if anybody's prepared to make a motion to accept it. I did ask some questions. And that's on the table. There were more. But I have questions, I made some suggestions on. Few pages in the early part of the document. Well, if someone is willing to make the motion, I would appreciate it if. Those comments could be incorporated as part of the.
I'd make that motion to accept the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five budget document with the supplemental document. In there.
Okay, motion by Aldag, thank you. I'll second. Second by Schlaf, thank you. Need discussion on the budget document? It's really a good document. There were a lot of, it gets better every year, just to to bring and. Tim will get to work on this in the future, everybody I know contributes to it, all the staff I'm sure do.
So Tim actually did to get, did kind of get thrown into the deep end on the on this one. But yeah, it it did take a good amount of time to. Um convert our existing document into the peer go of format. Um and working through some of the challenges and restrictions that come with. Function specific software. Um but I think Marie, Tim, Josh, the the whole team did a really good job. And in getting it in into a format that we're we're used to seeing. And I think the. You know, it it only gets better from here as we. Provide feedback to the software developers to hopefully get some additional functionality that would. Help us. Use the use the information that is built into the software better.
Jamie?
Is any of this available on the website in any sort of interactive format? I know when you guys were originally purchasing ClearGov, there was some like transparency module or something like that, what's the status of all that?
So it it will be, once city council adopts it, we can essentially toggle a button and and make the budget document live to 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 the public through through the peer go of website.
And will that be like some sort of a dashboard or will it literally just be like access to?
Yeah, it 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 is in more of a dashboard format where um. Essentially, each of the section headers is a header at the top, and then you hover over it and it drops down kind of the sub menu. And then each piece of the budget is its own page.
Like our ordinance.
Similar. And then and then we would take the the budget document as it's presented. In a PDF format and and throw that on in our normal location on the website under budgets.
You might have to give us a little tutorial of that once you get it all set up.
Happy to.
Okay. See no further questions, please call the vote to accept the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five budget document.
Griffin? No. Hubbard?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Um item number three is the special historic markers. I'll turn this over to you.
Sure, so um. Last meeting, meeting before, uh city council adopted a resolution asking staff to investigate the concept of historic markers and. The state and federal. Programs associated with it. ECH had actually been having a conversation on historical markers and Josh. Took this to to them at the last meeting, all handed over to Josh to provide. More information.
Yeah, so in the memo on page one seventy seven, I kind of mentioned a couple of few pieces of information that I kind of brought to ACH. Um so that's kind of looking at the Michigan Historical Act, Markers Act, some kind of those eligibility guidelines are through the Michigan History Center. Um some of those concepts are associated with the markers and some of the guidelines from the Department of the Interior. Um since that meeting with ACH, I was able to get some more in depth or different. Kind of guidelines from the Department of the Interior through the Michigan History Center, and I've also included on this memo. Um but I again on page one seventy seven, I kind of include some of the the section of the minutes from that meeting. And kind of going off of what Justin had mentioned as well, you know, ACH is very interested in these type of, in these sort of things. Um but I think one of the things they also kind of mentioned in the memo is that. A prior to that meeting, we discussed it, another kind of variation of that, which I included a picture of kind of. What we had been talking about on one seventy nine, really is kind of more blast paint, um historical, um. Kind of informational assignments, whatever you want to call them, that wasn't through like a specific state department or kind of federal agency, but it's more or less just a. Historical, um piece of history that has been that was put out in in our, so. Um that's kind of the stuff that we have been looking at, a few locations that we were kind of looking at for that may kind of fall under the kind of historical markers in the state of Michigan, kind of near. Hall, um both the fifty main, maybe even like. Monument Park, typically those type of places under the that act. Not typically that have a good historical backing, so we were, you know, who were to build that, we would probably work with the historical societies, do that different thing. Uh but Ubed L and some people through the historical society, they are looking at doing kind of a non. Government related history thing, so those are kind of different things that we have been looking at. Have already.
Um, thank you. Um, yes, as as Josh mentioned, there was already, and I brought it up in the meeting, that we approved this request to ACH that. The ACH was looking into some similar things. Um in in our meeting and the ACH meeting, we kind of talked about also, in addition to what Josh said about. Um having three. Deliverables. And one was. Recommendation of what sites do we potentially consider for the glass signs versus what sites do we go with the Michigan Historical Marks? What would be the proposed budget for those and what would be sort of a timeline of? Having this project, and I know I missed last meeting, but in the the meeting that I was there and we discussed. Um we had said potentially be able to provide at least those recommendations by the end of the year.
So is ACH's recommendation to do both or just one?
Something in ACH didn't make any kind of full recommendation, we kind of. Something in the E T H didn't make any kind of formal recommendation, we kind of swept through and discussed, um. Just, that, this kind of going into the historical markers, uh, and as kind of a continuation on to the other kind of historical conversation that we had. I think A C H is, I, I think the vibe is that people are definitely interested in doing it, um, you know, like I mentioned, you know, that bill is probably society already kind of approached us kind of informally, um. Uh, looking at doing some sort of historical signage, kind of starting to pull the wooden road downtown, it's kind of where we like to do kind of our first target. Um, I said they're proposed, you know, three thousand foot up, um, kind of proposal, um, so that's kind of, it, it was more or less a discussion of. This rather than kind of any formal recommendations until we kind of had a chance for the historical society and Bev to come back and say, hey, you know, these are the slots you really want to focus on versus kind of spots. You know, maybe we would focus on the historical, uh, you know, the plaques and things. It's supposed to be, most likely be better to be two different.
I, I guess my. Guess my question is, are we, so. We're, we're. Are we worried that if we pursue the. The state or national program that it's limiting, I mean, and, and A C H sees it more as a, as a educational thing with the glass?
But I think the, the concern kind of comes from our.
I mean, I don't know why we can't do both, I guess, is my.
Yeah.
Oh, and, and I think we definitely can do both, um, I think from, uh, my, my kind of interpretation, kind of my dive into some of the, uh, things of the Department of the Interior, it might, you know, my, my kind of concern looking at this is that it could possibly be limitations. Um, it, I think more or less the, you know, the, uh, when you're doing kind of, um, renovations to the building, so for example, like we were to play it, it's like an elevator on the building, that could impact the exterior. We would mostly have to submit something to the Department of the Interior to make sure that we're not. Like warping or not overly changing the appearance of the building. To get rid of historical significance, like stuff like that would be an example, like we did something on thirty-five. This is kind of how. But, uh, we definitely get, but it definitely is a case where we could do both, but I think one of the concerns that A C H also had was not doing them in the same location, because the historical society does something, we do something, we're mostly duplicating some sort of effort. Where they would like to focus on, so it's fast, we can do.
So, um, thank you, I, um, I just want to clarify a couple of things, so, um. Before the resolution that the council passed, the A C H was looking into recommending to council placement of, um, of the glass ones. And, um, some of it would be through the historical society potentially, and some of it, maybe it's, it's through the city or collaboration, so they were looking into, they didn't have a final plan, and they were looking into some of that. What, what would it look like, and the glass ones, one of the, um, interesting things about it, that while you're looking and reading about the history of the spot through the glass, you can see what does it look like today, right? So when the resolution and the council came and we took it to, um, to the A C H, there was at first a little bit of a confusion of. Whether we are asking them to replace that or what would be the next step, so we. Based on what it was asked in that resolution to A C H to provide. The, a draft of. Some, um, basically looking into this project by. Second meeting of, um, or first meeting of November. Um, the, what we talked about was what is feasibly we can say. For this meeting, what would A C H say, this is what the path we are taking into looking into the, this, and. In that was the three things of we look into locations that would po- potentially. Two, as you said, some that might. Look better with the glass and some might look better with the historical markers, what would be the budget for, or, you know, the funds needed for it? If we go down, down that path and what would be the, um. Timeline for it, so, um, that would be something that A C H has not recommended yet, but will. Is saying tonight that that's. What we would like to deliver by the end of the year.
Yeah, I mean, um. We don't have anything budgeted for the current fiscal year. Um, and it sounds like E C H really, really just needs more time to research and investigate the programs and the potential locations. I mean, th- this could be a topic of budget discussions, um, early next calendar year as we, as we look towards the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Absolutely, and that was more of the perspectives of if we provide that information ahead of time, then council can, um, plan for it in the budget.
Okay. I think it's good what you brought back. Good start, so what's the next step then? We're just gonna, does A C H encourage to put together the list that they're interested in?
Yeah, and so the next, the next step is I know that, um, Bethel will be bringing this back of potential patients, I have my list of kind of locations. But kind of more relevant to the markers, we're gonna discuss those in upcoming meetings, right?
Okay.
Yep, I think the, um, one important thing to, to recognize as, as we move forward with this is that, um. We, we should be limiting it to publicly owned property and city-owned property, um. Because we really shouldn't be spending city dollars to put markers and plaques on private property.
What if they're not on private property, but they reference? Something that's. Not public.
We'd, we'd have to look into that.
Well, like, like, for example, the, we have an educational sign in the park that talks about the railroad underpass. We don't own that at all, we're taking great pride in putting up a educational plaque about it on, on public property facing the. I, I mean, taking, would upgrade that to a, a glass sign? And I don't know, does that qualify as a historic thing?
I mean, there, 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 there's, there's a historic plaque on the.
On the inside.
On the inside of that, you don't, you don't read.
I think there could always be an option if we were aware of certain homes or businesses or something, you know, private, things that were privately owned, we could share the application information or something with residents. You know, obviously it could be up to them.
Yeah, exactly.
And, and we could work with the D D A and potentially fundraise to, to help those private entities. Get the funds to, to engage in the program.
These, yeah, these glass signs are very common.
Mm-hmm.
They're all over the place, so, I get, I get. Okay. I'll move down to non-arranged participation. I'm not seeing anyone in the audience, but there might be somebody online wants to say something. Is there anyone online that wants to make last comments? Okay, I'll move down to council comments. Olivia, would you like to go first?
Oh, I do not have any comments, thank you.
Okay, thanks for being here tonight. Wow.
I don't have any comments.
Yeah, no, thank you.
It's not.
I think you.
Jamie?
True to your word. Um, I just want to thank the residents who have trusted me to advocate for them and who have supported me in my efforts to do so. I've appreciated your conversations and words of support over the past four years, you have infused my efforts with tremendous meaning. All ten of you who might watch the video of this, um, as Mary Kewa said, because it is Veterans Day. We started this meeting with a few moments of silence to recognize and honor those who have served to protect and defend our rights and freedoms. Including our First Amendment right to petition our government, many of whom made great sacrifices in doing so. We are the land of the free because of the brave, I want to thank all veterans for their service. And lastly, I would like to thank my family for their constant support and the sacrifices they made so that I could serve our community in this way.
Well, thank you. Does anyone have any? Proposed agenda for future meetings other than, uh. It was requested that we add the zoning ordinance amendments discussion. And you may be bringing the, um. Sort of a pre-arranged participation from Mr., either Mr. Miller or, or Miss Olson, one of the two, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to add? Would someone please make a motion for adjournment?
I'll make the motion for adjournment.
Moved by Dan. Seconded by Jamie, we gotta get you on the, on here, making a motion on the last day.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor of adjournments, if I'm saying hi, please. Hi.
Hi.
Those opposed? We have concluded. Good night.